Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
In competition, there are many variables to overcome. Your competitors, your confidence, the terrain, and the unexpected. April 13th, all of these factors will come into play in the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend returns to Alaris Center with reigning tour champion, who in last year's championship, merrily defeated Quad Chaos, who is back and looking for redemption, and others who are looking to take them down. Who will prevail? Find out April 13th, the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend, Alaris Center.
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
How many things in your house connect to the internet? Let's see, computers, smartphones, gaming console, maybe your appliances and lights. They say that by the year 2020, the average home will have five devices for every one person. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to be average. We're going to need much better internet.
Midco Extreme Gig is here, life changing.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
As a farm kid from North Dakota, I was raised to face challenges head-on. But that was put to the test when I was diagnosed with cancer as a teenager. Now, I'm determined to help kids overcome illnesses like I did. So I started my journey at the University of North Dakota. With hard work and determination, I'll help others like my doctors helped me. I'm making my impact. How will you make yours?
Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, March 11th. Under Item 1, welcome and roll call.
Weigle.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Ma.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The new Grand Forks City website is amazing if anyone hasn't seen it, but it's really hard to use on an iPad. So I'm trying to fire up tonight's meeting and I'm having a hard time. Thank you. Appreciate it. Under Item 2, Discussion Items 2.0 Legislative Update. Mr. Weber, are we going to speak on the legislative update?
Yes, please. We'll take that here, just a moment, sorry. And, well, my apologies, I'm also having a little, some technical difficulties here. I'll be right with you on that.
Okay.
What we're basically doing is continuing to monitor particularly infrastructure bills. Prairie Dog Bill is up, water infrastructure is up. City staff continue to work closely with the League of Cities. Mostly, our agendas overlap with the rest of the state, the other cities in the state. We have some that we're following on our own. Ken, do you have some details you want to add there?
No, I'll probably just add the issue that last week, we went down and testified on Senate Bill 2020. That has the major funding for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. But also, there was a presentation by, from the League of Cities, that funding also would come for the last $9.9 million of the water treatment plan. So all of that would be tied up into that bill. We had, I think, good testimony, and that, of course, passed the Senate side, and now it's on the House. And we'll continue to follow that bill. Tomorrow, I know it's 2275, which has to do with long-term low-interest loan. Marine Source Set is down to testify on that on our behalf. That would be a much-needed bill, too, as we look at funding for future infrastructure. That one, again, is this coming week, and...
Of course, the state is going to be receiving its forecasts on oil price projections, which will drive a lot of the budgetary decisions. Will those projections be coming in this week, Ken?
Yes, there were some that came in today, which were very favorable, and I think the legislature has their own that is coming in tomorrow, and I think there'll be the combination of those two that will impact quite a bit of what we see for spending for the rest of the legislative session.
And of course, Mr. Vean and I are currently in DC as part of a delegation led by the mayor. We go up to Capitol Hill tomorrow to meet with our congressional delegation and to carry our legislative priorities forward there. Primarily, we'll be talking about infrastructure there as well, and a little discussion about the opioid epidemic, veterans affairs. Primarily, however, it'll be infrastructure is what we'll be talking about. And so there's that. Friday afternoon, we had our regular session with the League of Cities, the weekly phone-in, and then the committee, Grand Forks City Legislative Committee, met after that. Ken, do you have anything else to add? I've got a closing note on that meeting.
Nope, go ahead.
That meeting, after we discussed all of the established priorities, there's been a bit of a moving target, came up on the agenda, House Concurrent Resolution 3037, which is seeking to overturn the state's support from the 1970s for the Equal Rights Amendment. And this was reaffirmed in 2007 by the state legislature, that the state continues to support the Equal Rights Amendment. Although, my understanding that once a state goes through that approval process, it's a done deal, but this is a matter of constitutional debate. So the legislative committee discussed this on Friday, but it was clear that this is not in line with any of our current legislative priorities. So it was decided that this should be possibly brought forward for Committee of the Whole to consider tonight, with the possibility of the council passing some sort of vote next week. And that's what we've got. Anything else, Ken?
Well, I was just going to mention one other item. When I was down in Bismarck on Friday, unfortunately, I had two testimonies going on at the same time. I guess that was Thursday. Anyway, House Bill 1227, the prohibiting of the rental license fees, I was not able to actually testify on that, but Kirk Coon, who was there and was able to deliver the testimony, plus some of the letters that had come from citizens, that he had put together, which was much appreciated. I understand that that testimony, Kirk did a real good job, and so did Blake from the League of Cities, for what the city is actually doing in support of what we're doing, and against the bill of trying to eliminate that. So that was the other one I wanted to bring up.
Good. And it's probably also important to mention that Saturday afternoon, the Team Grand Forks, this is the city, county, school district, UND, the airport, the political entities in our community, joined with a number of our legislators for a discussion Saturday afternoon. And again, during that meeting, House Concurrent Resolution, this effort to overturn state support of the Equal Rights Amendment, came up during that discussion as well. And I think that's what we've got.
Great. Mr. Weber, Mr. Vean, thank you so much for representing us in Washington, DC as well. Any comments or thoughts? Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you. I've been following the House Concurrent Resolution 3037 in its various iterations, and was quite surprised that it had passed in the House and now moved over to the Senate, and will be up for a vote sometime in the next few weeks. I am asking our council to take a stand opposing this legislation, and even though it has not been part of our legislative agenda, I think the nature of the legislature is such that, as Mr. Weber pointed out, is a moving target. There are bills that are introduced that maybe you don't see at first, or that take on more importance throughout the session, that go through amendments, and that are worthy of being watched. I do think that this bill does fit with our city priorities. The reason I believe that is that we have resolved to be a welcoming and inclusive community. And in the interest of knowing that half of our citizens are women, whether that's our daughters, our mothers, ourselves, our spouses, it makes no sense to me that North Dakota would pull back on support for the Equal Rights Amendment at this juncture. As Mr. Weber pointed out, the original bill was passed in 1975. I happened to be in college at that time, and worked on behalf of supporting that bill originally during that time. So it's near and dear to my heart. Lots and lots of women throughout the country have worked very hard over the past 100-plus years to achieve equal rights and to achieve equal rights under the Constitution. I'm hoping that we can look at this as meeting or aligning with our city priorities of welcoming and inclusion of all of our residents, so everybody has the opportunity to be treated and participate in an equal manner within our community. Given that, I would make a motion that we take a position in opposition to this legislation.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Dockler. Is there any other discussion? Anecdotally, it seems very strange to me that we would actually need an Equal Rights Amendment in today's day and age, but unfortunately, we do. I think people should be treated equally regardless of who you are, and so I personally support everything that you've said, Ms. Marshall. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose your sign. Motion carries. Any other comments, Mr. Weber, Mr. Vean?
I would, I understand Ms. Marshall's comment about this being consistent with past actions from the city council, and completely support that. For the legislative committee, which has a slightly different role, it didn't feel like it was in their, you know, domain to make a decision like this. So I applaud both the statements made by Council Representative Marshall, and I'm proud of the city for its vote. That's what I've got.
Ken? Very good. Thank you both. Moving on, Item 2.1, Ordinance Amending Section 9-04041, Article 4 of Grand Forks City Code related to Gaming. Mr. Swanson, good evening.
Good evening. You're going to be sick of me tonight because I think I have the next six items on the agenda to cover. Just tonight, you can get sick of me. There's been a request to increase the current cap on gaming sites that a particular or any one gaming organization can have, and I'll give you a little bit of the background. When charitable gaming came into being in North Dakota, there was a concern of the city council at that time to have as many charities or gaming operators as possible to operate gaming. So there was a cap put as to how many locations you could conduct gaming at. Over the years, that market has changed, and the number of charities willing or able to do gaming has shrunk, to the point now where there are very few that will do it, and there are a number of establishments that would like to have gaming in our establishment that can't because those that are able to do the gaming have already reached their cap under our code. So the request here is to increase our cap to 10 sites per gaming operation. From our perspective, watching the industry change, the city attorney's office has no opposition to that, and we would recommend that you consider changing and increasing that cap. It doesn't appear to impact who can conduct gaming. It appears to be consistent with what the desires or needs of some of the licensed facilities that would like to offer gaming to their clientele, so we don't see a particular concern. But that's our perspective. There may be others that would like to address the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Comments, Ms. Marshall?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to ask to be recused from this vote. My company operates charitable gaming in Grand Forks and is one of the two companies that has, is full at seven, and so to avoid any conflict of interest, I would like to be recused.
Is there a motion to recuse? By Dockler, second, by, by what's her name, Ms. Ma. Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, same sign. Ms. Marshall's recused. Any other comments, thoughts? Yeah, Ms. Ma.
How many charities have reached their cap? Do we know?
I think Ms. Marshall mentioned two, but she's recused, so she, well, there's no reason you can't speak to the issue.
There are two organizations in town that have, that have reached the cap of seven. There are several other organizations that are quite small, probably one, two, or three sites. I don't know the exact number.
Mr. Weigle?
I guess there's people in the audience that I see here that maybe would like to speak in either favor or opposition to it, so if they want to say a couple of words, I'd be okay with that.
Certainly. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the issue? Item 2.1? Please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself for the record, sir.
Members of the council, I'm John Bonzer. I live at 111 North 3rd Street. I am one of the, as most of you know, I am a license holder in town. If you didn't know that, I'd like to introduce myself and greet you all. The problem is, is that there are sites, there are charities that haven't, that are unable to offer more than, in other words, they don't feel that they can do anymore. Some have three. Now Sandy's at seven, but there are many other charities that are, feel that they are at their capacity, that can't do more. So this would allow, I've got a, Mr. Stefan is here. He's a great example of a charity that is at seven, but is able, if he is allowed to, offer more, and has expressed interest in coming into my establishment. So this is the situation we're trying to rectify. So if you have any questions of me, I have contacted other charities, and that's the answer I get from them, that we're at three or we're at four, and we just don't feel that we can do anymore. It's a staffing issue, it's a, there's a lot of different issues. It's mostly staffing, payroll, stuff like that.
Any questions for Mr. Bonzer? Yes, Ms. Ma.
This may show my ignorance, but they provide the staffing for the gaming? Is that part of the responsibility of the charity? If they would have it at Bonzer's, they would have to have the staffing?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's part of the limiting reason that maybe a charity...
That's one of, that's one of the reasons, yeah.
I think there are, there are not-for-profits in town that have gotten out of gaming altogether in recent, in recent years.
At least two, if not three, we were trying to come up with those, but two for sure have pulled out of town.
I know the CVB is no longer doing, which they used to. When I was a board member on the CVB a dozen years ago, we actually got out of it because of the staffing issues and other, and other issues with them.
I think Prairie Public has pulled out, and help, help me.
Some of the others just reduced down to one or two.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonzer.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, please, Mr. Solberg.
Yes.
State your name and address. Well, just your name for the record is fine. Thanks.
Eric Solberg, 911 Conwood Street. I am a general manager of three of the bars around town as well. We have had difficulties with trying to bring charities in. We actually had Prairie Public in our bars before, and they completely pulled out of the town. We were the last ones that actually, they had a site to add. They pulled out last summer. Met with several different charities, either they looked at just not wanting to go back downtown, they didn't have the staffing to be able to do it. Staffing's a big thing with them. We have, right now, in one of our bars, we do have like the new pull tab machines. Tried to get the other gaming as far as like the betting wheels or blackjack pull tabs, but they don't have the manpower to staff it at all. So there's basically two nonprofits that are able to do that, and that's Listen NDHI, that actually has the staffing to be able to do that, so.
Very good. Any, any questions for Mr. Solberg? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
President Sandy.
Yes, Mr. Weigle.
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ma. Of course, follow-up comments?
Mr. Swanson, or does anyone know why it was capped at seven initially? Is there a reason for it?
Actually, it was capped at five before that, and it was moved to seven. The reason was the intent early on to allow as many charities as wanted to conduct gaming to have that right. So you didn't have, in effect, one or two large gaming exclude the smaller ones. And that may have been effective in the case when gaming initially started, but over the years, that has not been the case. In fact, our office will get calls periodically from licensed establishments asking if we know of any gaming operators that could do gaming. So what you heard from these gentlemen is spot on. The situation right now is not all charities found gaming to be as lucrative as they had hoped, or as attractive, and the number of, and this is true statewide, the number of operators has reduced substantially over the years.
So you don't see this as any way limiting the smaller charities from getting into gaming as an option? If they wanted to, they would have had this opportunity?
Well, the opportunity's been there, and this situation has existed for some time. This isn't new in 2019. This has been growing for a number of years. The opportunity is still there for a small charity to go in somewhere. Even at capping it at 10, you wouldn't have enough operators from those two large operations to cover all potential sites.
Okay.
Mr. Swanson, do you know when the original, when this ordinance was written?
I can answer that if I can grab a book off.
Well, approximately.
Mid-1980s.
Okay, so.
Mid to late 80s.
When this was drafted, the closing time for the bars in Grand Forks was 1:00 AM, correct?
Correct.
And I see that we still have in here that the gaming establishments have to finish at 1:00 AM.
I spoke with finance about that, and that's another change that we think that the council should be considering making.
Great. I would think that the closing time of the bars, the finishing time for the gaming establishments should be the same. So would now be, would you think of now as a time to suggest that amendment to the motion?
I think it would be an appropriate time to do that. The request that came forward was just on the numbers, but finance office last week, Sherry and I discussed that, and we thought it was appropriate for the council to consider it. It wasn't particularly germane to the actual request, but if the council's inclined to do it, I think that would be appropriate.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Weigle?
I do.
Ms. Ma? Great. Any other thoughts or comments? Yes, Ms. Ma?
Is that a specific time, or just?
It'd be 2:00 AM.
2:00 AM, and that's what we would do, not the closing time of the respective bar?
Correct, 2:00 AM, yeah.
And then President Sandy, the charity has the right, if they wanted to close 12, or 1:45?
Right, right.
Else get people out, they have that option as well.
It gives them the option.
Correct.
Great. Any other comments? Seeing none? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 2.2, Ordinance Amending Section 21-0205 of the Grand Forks City Code relating to domestic distillery. Again, Mr. Swanson.
Grand Forks has a domestic distillery. You could call it a micro-distillery within its geographical jurisdiction. They currently do not have a tasting room. They have some interest in adding that, and they've asked what would be available under current code to accommodate them if they were to have a tasting room or tasting operations. And none of our current ordinances allow that. They have spirits. Our ordinances right now allow tasting of wines, beers, and cordials. In looking at state law, state law was changed fairly recently to specifically allow certain types of distilleries to have a tasting room, and under certain limitations within their site, to do that. So with the request that we received and discussing with finance department, I drafted a proposed ordinance that if the council were to approve, would allow, would place a distillery, domestic distillery, essentially on the same grounds as a wine-making ordinance or license that we have, as well as a microbrewery ordinance. And so is before you for your consideration. This one, we're trying to get out in front of the issue a little bit and make sure that they understood what the needs or concerns would be.
Any questions about the proposed domestic distillery? Ms. Marshall?
Just a question, Mr. Swanson. I know in the past, you've advocated for reducing the number of types of licenses. Is this, would this be possible to combine with any other license category, or is it unique enough that it needs to stand on its own?
We specifically looked at that, because that is a concern I have. But given the requirements that the state put on a domestic distillery, none of our other codes would accommodate those limitations. So I didn't feel that we could pigeonhole them in something else, but I did look at that.
Okay, thank you. Given that, I would move that we approve.
Great. There's a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second by Dockler? Any other comments?
If I may, Council President Sandy, in follow-up to Ms. Marshall's question about do we really need another ordinance, could Mr. Swanson speak to the fee level? It seems that this is out of line with what we're charging some individuals, license holders in town, although I don't have that information in front of me. It's been a little while since we received that wonderful testimonial on, or the, to oil, on liquor license ordinances. But could Mr. Swanson speak to the justification for the fee at this time?
Yeah, the fee was taken to mirror the other similar licenses, such as the microbrewery and wine tasting. So it's the exact same fee as the others.
There would be no food served at this distillery? It would simply be a place to go in, sample, and purchase, retail?
There is a possibility of having food served under the state law. Our ordinance would not change that or restrict that.
Ms. Longmark, did you have something to add?
I was just going to say, we looked at, when we first got this request, we did reach out and look at what other communities have. Fargo does have a distillery license, very similar to what Mr. Swanson has drafted up. And we, the fees you see in your staff report is what Fargo, Fargo has a $3,000 issuance fee, and they have a $500 annual fee, but then they do have some other add-on fees that tack on to that that would get us to about the same level that we're including in... about the same level that we're including in the staff report at the six.
I, I might add, I can provide counsel with a comparison to other fees if you would like. The number came from the finance department. The establishment of the fee is an annual decision for the council to make by resolution, but.
Mr. Weber, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I have one follow-up. I know that normally we, we take public comments during council meetings with the last item, and often you'll take, take questions from the audience. Is there anyone there to speak on this tonight? I'm not in the room, so I can't tell.
Anyone interested in speaking, item 2.2? Yeah, please come forward.
Sarah Horack, nine North Third Street. I understand the, the license lines up with other distilleries or the tap house license or the winery license, but when you look at adding in the ability for food service on something like that, comparing that license to a class one or a class four, that fee structure is quite different, quite significant. So even the, the class ones and the class four, $70,000 issuance fees and almost $4,000 annual fees. So that fee structure is quite different than, than a class one and class four. I know we're allowed to do different things, but the fee structures are so skewed. So I'm struggling to understand how those licenses are so much less than a class one and a class four.
I can answer it.
Okay.
Class one allows you to do on-sale and off-sale of wine, beer, cordials, and spirits. The microbrewery, they are limited to the amount of production they can do. They are limited to where they can sell that produced item, and they are limited in the quantities of what they can sell on-site. The same is true with, with wine-making. This particular one, we've adopted the limitations of quantity of produced product. It has to be produced a product from the state of North Dakota, has to be produced on-site. So there are limitations of what they can sell, how they can sell, and quantity. If the council wants to address all of the fee structure, I think you can, it'd be appropriate to do that, but I do that in the course of studying in your budget, all fees. I think this one lines up with what your current fees are. But if council wants to look at all fees, I wouldn't suggest you hold this ordinance up in the context of looking at a class one or class four. But the other thing, a class one is allowed to have gaming. This location can't have gaming. I mean, there are a number of differences between those types of licenses. But I don't disagree that to run a class one or a class four is a substantial investment, and it is a different kind of investment than these types of operations. But I would not have any objection to council studying all of your issuance fees and all of your annual fees for license premises.
Ms. Mock, thoughts?
If we wanted to do that, when do those come up for renewal? Because you mentioned we renew those annually, so is there a good time that we could, you know, maybe not hold this particular issue up, but relook at all of them?
It's part of your budget process. Every time we approve your annual budget, you also approve an annual fee resolution.
So we could maybe add that to the budget process as, you know, kind of a breakout?
That would be the time to look across the board at all of those fees for alcohol.
Yep.
My only point is I don't think it would be fair to hold this ordinance up with the thought that you're concerned with a fee for a different type of, of license.
Mr. Weigle, thoughts?
Ready to vote.
Ready to vote? Do we have a motion and a second? I don't think we have a motion. Oh, we do. Oh, made the motion. Yeah, very good. Mock made the second. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, it's been so long. Mr. Weber, Mr. Veen, any thoughts?
I, I'm always in favor of business development, and I'd hate to stand in the way, but the, the fee structure feels disproportionate to, to me at this time. I'll be voting in opposition to it, but look forward to possibly a, a further discussion next week.
Great.
Ready to vote.
Great. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Weber descents. Item 2.3, ordinance repealing article 12 of chapter 21 relating to transient merchants and reenacting article 12 of chapter 21 of the Grand Forks City Code relating to door-to-door sales and solicitations. Mr. Swanson?
Members of the council, this is a major redraft and a major change in policy from the city. From what I can tell, the city of Grand Forks has regulated transient merchants perhaps as far back as prior to the 1950s. A transient merchant is defined as any merchant that does not have a permanent place of business located within the city limits. For those transient merchants to come in and do business, they have to have that license, which requires a payment of a fee and a bond and so forth. That has worked relatively well until the last few years with the growth of internet activities. The line between who is a transient merchant from outside the city limits to a merchant inside the city limits is sometimes very blurred. We have situations in which we know that there are vendors that will literally rent facilities in the city legitimately, and will hold craft fairs, will hold different types of events, will do deliveries of product ordered online. And the questions are coming up, do you need a transient merchant license or not? The transient merchant license had two different logical underpinnings. One, which has been declared to be unconstitutional, and that was an attempt to keep out-of-town vendors or businesses from doing business in your city. The second was to protect the consumer. What we have observed over a large number of years is that that consumer is generally the homeowner. And the problem is the door-to-door salespeople that either won't leave, are abusive, or irritating, or they ignore the sign on the door, you know, no solicitors, keep out, no trespassing, whatever it might be. So for a number of years, finance office, police department, and my office have been talking about how to address this. And there have been a number of concerns about when do we know a transient merchant is even in town? We have certain exemptions from transient merchant, and council itself will waive transient merchant fees on a regular basis for various events. Given the fact that you no longer can constitutionally criticize an out-of-town business doing business in town, and you can't discriminate against them, if we look to the true consumer protection, that seemed to me to be the door-to-door solicitation. So the ordinance you have in front of you completely repeals your transient merchant license requirements, and it replaces it with a door-to-door solicitation regulation. There are a number of exemptions in the ordinance. We've exempted out everything from church groups to athletic groups to religious groups, philanthropic groups, veterans groups. There's a large number. And it doesn't apply to door-to-door business calls. It is intended to apply to residential calls. It is structured similar to transient merchant in that you need a license, you need a bond, but it isn't based upon whether you are within the city with a formal brick-and-mortar place of business, or if you're from Oslo, Minnesota, or Manville, or Thompson, or something of that nature. So it's really before you for your consideration and thought. If you want to take more time to think about it, no problem there. This was our opportunity to at least make the presentation to you and to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Any, any thoughts or comments?
I, I for one, I actually like this ordinance change. The, you know, the, the notion of pop-up stores is relatively new in our area of the world, but it's been going on in major cities for quite some time. Although, I, I would love to encourage our local businesses to meet all the needs of all of our citizens. If there are stores in Fargo or elsewhere in Winnipeg, for example, that have merchandise that they could quickly do a pop-up store in our community and meet a need that isn't being met, I think it's great. And, and removing one of the hurdles of someone coming in for a short-term stint, I think is, is good for our community. I also do think we need to continue to have the permits required for door-to-door salespeople, because we want to know who's, who's in our community and what they're selling. So I, I like this ordinance myself. Any, any other comments, thoughts?
I'll move approval.
Weigle moves approval, second by Mock. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.5, ordinance amending section 21-0234 relating to hearing on alleged violations for violation of alcoholic beverage ordinances. Mr. Swanson?
You can put this ordinance in the classification of housekeeping. The code as it's currently written is not very clear as to the timing of the notice to be given in the event a hearing is needed for a violation. I don't know that I'd consider this to be a substantive change, but it is significant enough that it should be acted upon by the city council. We maintain the same 30-days' notice. I think it's just clear as to when that alleged violator is given the notice of a potential violation and of potential action to be taken against them. So it's somewhat of a housekeeping measure, but I think it's something that we would recommend the council adopt.
I'll move approval. Moved by Weber. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I, I'm wondering if we skipped 2.4, or if that's combined with this, or if we'll just go back to that one?
Thank you. Yes, this is item 2.5. We skipped 2.4, so we'll come back to 2.4.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was actually addressing 2.4. So 2.5 is in a similar vein.
Yes, exactly.
2.4 is tobacco. Again, it relates to.
Tobacco licensing violations. I read 2.5, alcohol.
It relates again to the notice of potential violations and hearings.
Right. It's the same concept. So, okay, so Mr. Weber, did you make a motion on item 2.4 or 2.5?
I thought I was making a motion on 2.4, that we were talking about that, but.
Very good.
Maybe I heard it correctly, yep.
Thank you. And Ms. Marshall, you second that motion on item 2.4. Any other comments before I go to 2.9? Seeing none. All those in favor of item 2.4, say aye?
Aye.
I'm, motion carries unanimously. Well, I'm sorry. Any names, Mr. Weber and Mr. Veen?
We're, we're in support.
Yes. Great, excellent. Okay, item 2.5. Now we'll try ordinance amending section 21-0234 relating to hearing on alleged violations for alcoholic beverage ordinances. Same, same story, Mr. Swanson, correct?
Yes, it is. The concern here was that the potential violator received the appropriate notice and timing before that hearing, and it's again a cleaning up of the language that we have. There are no changes as far as timing or anything of that nature. It's pure housekeeping, in, in our opinion.
Great. Any thoughts? Moved by Marshall, second by Mock.
Second.
There you go.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Great. Item 2.6, ordinance adopting section 3-0402 relating to non-substantive corrections or ordinances and city code revisions. Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. Quite frankly, I thought this was a, almost a no-brainer, an easy one. I understand that council has some concerns or heartache over this. Want to give you a little bit of background. You act upon individual ordinances throughout the year. Once a year, those ordinances are collected and placed into a printed form in the code books and are published online. In the interim, we find in our office as the code reviser that some departments that draft their own ordinances will make errors in numbering. They'll have a letter where it should be a number, they'll have a number where it should be a letter. They will misnumber things. The formatting is wrong. So when it gets to the printing company, they need to have some direction as to what, what changes are going to be made. We find situations in which grammar is incorrect. We try to catch those as they come through the ordinance process, but our office doesn't draft all ordinances that you see. And so we will have errors in grammar, is versus are, things of that nature. We will have mis-citations. It should have referred to section 120204, and it actually says 120402. Complete, just incorrect citation because they've misaligned the numbers. We will find in some cases, particularly with cut and paste, that the same sentence will appear twice in an ordinance, because they didn't format and align their cut and paste techniques up. We have found that, we try to be gender-neutral and use language as general-neutral. Sometimes we find that ordinances will have references to he alone, and we're trying to change those. We find punctuation errors all the time. And you can mark me up there. My aunt was my kindergarten teacher, and she'd probably roll over if she knew how many times I put a wrong comma in, or too many commas, or not enough. But those are the types of things that I have been doing in my tenure as city attorney, just commonplace, natural. We want as good of a product in our published city code as we can have. We want to reduce those errors where we can, but when they do occur, because they will occur, we think it's appropriate they can be administratively corrected. So what I did is I have crafted an ordinance, and this isn't my work, this actually comes out of the city of Houston, Texas. There are numerous examples of similar ordinances that would give me the express authority to make those changes that I've been doing for more than 30 years on my own. I understand that there are some council members that are suggesting that, no, all changes should come back through the council. If you want to do that, that's fine. I mean, if you want to have a new ordinance drafted because there's a wrong comma, or a wrong citation, or a misnumbering, we can do that. It'll cause, work for a few departments and more paperwork and things like that, but we think it'd be more expeditious, more economical, and more reasonable to allow those corrections to be made. You just passed two ordinances that although they were non-substantive changes, it didn't change the effect of the ordinance. They were significant enough that they aren't falling into the categories of misnumbering, punctuation, misspelling, grammar, the categories that we've identified in the ordinance. So I think if there's a concern that this is a power grab by the city attorney's office, I can assure you it's not. If you're concerned about the draft of language in the ordinance, we can look at that, whatever your concerns are. I don't know what they might be. But I think it's appropriate to allow a mechanism to make those corrections in an administrative approach. Sometimes we will find references that should have been to CFR, standing for Code of Federal Regulations, and they'll just have CR. Or we'll have references to the North Dakota Administrative Code, and it'll just say NDA instead of NDAC. Those are the types of errors on references that we see. There are times that we'll reference a building code that we've adopted by reference, and we may not have the full name of the building code, or the fire code, or the life safety code, whatever it might be. Those are the types of things that we're inclined here. Not a substantive change. In fact, I will tell you that I've been in discussion with the planning department for the last two weeks. They have made an error in numbering that I think is significant enough that I'm telling them they have to go back to, to scratch and redo it, because it is, although it's just a numbering error, it had what I considered to be a substantive effect, and you'll see that over time, that it will come through here. But that's the background on the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Why it's here, we're in the process of providing the 19, excuse me, the 2018 ordinances to the code publisher. And they have found those types of errors, and they're asking, how do you want to do it? And some of them we've found and we've corrected before we gave them to the publishing company to include. If you were to look in the code, I could identify number errors where they will put a note in, and they'll say ordinance corrected to reflect misnumbering, grammar, or whatever. So I'll stand for any questions that council may have.
Any questions for city attorney Howard Swanson? Ms. Marshall?
I think what you're proposing makes all the sense in the world. And I don't know what the opposing thoughts would be, but I know from the standpoint that, that I sit in as a CEO with a. that I sit in as a CEO with a board, there are different roles that essentially the legislative branch plays from the executive branch. And I don't think that our role should be to micromanage issues that are nonsubstantive. And so, I think what you're proposing is really a benefit to us and to the city, and I would be fully in favor of making the motion to pass it.
There's a motion by Marshall. Is there a second? Second by Dockler. Are there any other comments?
President Sandy?
Mr. Weber?
It seems to me that we've been operating just fine for quite some time. I have the absolute trust in Mr. Swanson, but we want to make policy not based on the person, but on good process. So, I'm inclined to stay with the way we've been doing business.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Veen, did you have any comments?
I guess I'm probably on the same, well, I am on the same position. If it's, we're just putting into code, I guess what we're already doing, and it seems to have worked. So, I guess I feel like I'd be supportive of it also.
If I can respond to those, I appreciate the sentiment, but I'd kind of like to have something that I can stand on and point to. I don't plan on being in the city attorney's office forever, and I think a successor to me would also like to have that type of guidance as to what their role is. I see this as a narrowing approach as to what the code reviser can do, not a broadening approach. So, I understand the comments. I don't, I appreciate the sentiment, but I really think what we're trying to do is to give a foundation of the code reviser as to what their limits are, and to give authority for that code reviser to make those errors or corrections. I don't think any of you want to have ordinances coming through with changes in commas or changing numbers, and that's what we're really talking about here. So, for what it's worth.
Mr. Swanson, I appreciate all of that. I think obviously somebody talked to you that I was asking questions today, and I think that's great. I wasn't, I don't think anybody is trying to keep things from you or put you in the hot seat here. So, if you feel that way, my apologies, and I should have reached out to you directly, but I had a very busy day today with other things, so.
I have thicker skin than worry about that.
Right, no.
What I really wanted to do is give you an explanation as to what the intent and purpose of the ordinance was.
And I understand, and I don't think there's anything nefarious going on. As a matter of fact, my wife and I had the conversation about this item today while I was driving over here, and she and I both agreed that we're very fortunate to have what is widely known as the best city attorney in the state of North Dakota and in a wide area. People always speak very highly of you and of your morals, your ethics, and the quality work that comes out of your office, which I don't think anyone is questioning that. My concern, my concern is and continues to be the fact that this isn't about, this isn't about the Swanson workup office. This is about the Grand Forks City Attorney's Office, and we don't know who the next city attorney is, which is why I agree with you. You believe that we need some clear direction. So, just a general question. Under what authority has the office been working in the past? I mean, you're telling, you're telling us that we've been, you've been just doing these changes, but there's, you're saying that there hasn't been any authority to actually do those changes?
No, under the city code and under state law, the city attorney is considered to be the code reviser, meaning that I have the obligation to maintain a set of ordinances and to codify them on a regular or periodic basis. So, it's a combination of work between finance department and city attorney's office. They assign ordinance numbers in the process. I get them after they're signed by the mayor, after they're signed by the finance director, and after they're numbered and distributed. And then, we put them into a format that the publishing company can work with. So, if you're looking for a specific authority, it's, you're not going to find it. It falls under the category of code reviser. And that's one of the things I'd like to do, is to have that next step. This is the authority, and this is all the authority you have.
Sure.
And that's why I was a little surprised that there was some sentiment that this might be too wide open when, and maybe we can draft it a little differently, but when you look at it, you know, misspelling of words.
Mr. Swanson, so I'll tell you very directly the two issues that I have with it is, A, substantive is subjective. Sure, okay, so you yourself-
Not the way this is drafted.
You yourself used the example of the two, the two ordinance changes that we made.
Correct.
And you said that they were not substantive.
Correct.
But you brought them forward.
Correct.
But what this says is you don't have to bring them forward.
Absolutely not.
How am I missing that?
Because what I presented to you did not include a misspelling of a word, did not include a grammatical error, did not include a typographical error, punctuation error, completion and nonsubstantive omission, elimination of duplication, incorrect reference. Our ordinance defines for this purpose what is nonsubstantive. It's not a matter of interpretation. That's why those provisions are in there.
Okay, and then the other thing that I take question with is it says including but not limited to.
Okay, and I figured that's what concern was, and that's why I said if that's, if it's in the drafting of the ordinance that we have here and not in the principle, then we can address that.
Sure.
We can remove that phrase, "not limited to." I can remove the phrase for purposes of maintaining city code in an orderly and contemporaneous form and limit it just to the items that are expressed.
So, perhaps that there's a, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels about this, and maybe I'm just being overly sensitive to what feels like giving up of power of the city council. But perhaps, perhaps this ordinance, because I agree with you, it really would be nice to make this black and white one way or the other. Perhaps having some sort of a monthly report on not necessarily bringing every ordinance back every time somebody needs to make a comma, but anything that's other than grammatical errors, maybe just giving the council a report of, hey, here are all the things that we actually had to change.
And I actually do that every year. When we publish the code, I give you a memorandum identifying those changes. We can do it more regularly or things of that nature, but if it's a reporting issue, I understand. We can do better than that. Again, I'm not trying to generate more paper. I'm not trying to take more of your time to figure out what's proper punctuation or grammar. And maybe I should never have brought this forward. I thought it was appropriate to define what authority the code reviser has. And if the language as here is too concerning to you and you're not concerned with the principle, then let's change the draft. And I thought this was relatively tight and narrow because I didn't want to have the situation where you said the ordinance adopted by the code, by the council says it shall be black, and I change it to white. That's a substantive change. There was nothing of that nature here at all. So, I'll stop arguing. I'll stop promoting. I think this is a reasonable request. If there are particular concerns that should be addressed, I'd be happy to do that. There's no boogeyman in the closet here. This is really about taking minor errors off of your responsibility and put it where it belongs, and that is an administrative approach, so that you aren't burdened and we don't generate more cost.
Right, but just, we're not being burdened with it now.
Correct.
So, it really doesn't change anything.
This does not change anything, except I now have an ordinance that I can rely upon, and it's an ordinance for my successor to be looking at and saying, here's the authority as the code reviser that you have.
Ms. Mock?
So, I guess I don't really have a concern about what's drafted, but help us understand. So, it seems pretty clear that just an error grammatical or something of that nature would be really defined by this. Where we had those other ordinances where you said you didn't think it was a substantive change, but you still brought it forward. How do you decide to do that? Because I think maybe that's getting at the hesitation of some other people. Like, how would you decide to bring those forward? Like, you need to see this and go on this.
Well, I would look at this as a checklist. And for every ordinance that I would find that I think there's a concern that needs to be addressed, I would be checking off, is it misspelling? Well, none of the changes you had earlier were that. Is it a grammatical error? None of them were grammatical errors. They didn't read well, but they weren't grammatical errors. It wasn't typographical. It wasn't punctuation. It wasn't an error in the reference. It was a legitimate substantive or nonsubstantive drafting change that I believe requires legislative approval.
And then, oh.
Yeah, Ms. Grasser?
Well, I was just going to ask a follow-up. So, like, you were talking about the planning department and how even though it was just a numbering error, you thought perhaps that was more substantive? Is there a thought process with that? Is it in the intent?
Yeah, you'll need to see it, but here's what happened. It has to do with the adoption of the plans for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. In one draft, they have an incorrect year. They have a 2013 year. In another draft, in which they changed the subsection, it has 2017. So, my question to them was, are you trying to change the year? Are you adding something different? What's the effect of that? And I, because you can't tell on the face of the document what the intent was, I determined that to be a substantive change. Here's an example of a typo error, and I found it today. The ordinance says if, it should have said of. Those are the types of things that we're looking at.
Ms. Grasser?
Perhaps just a suggestion. It sounds like, it sounds to me like maybe the one-year reporting timeframe is maybe too long. I speculate maybe a monthly reporting frame might be a little too often, and I'd maybe throw out there, perhaps consider a quarterly report that would go along with this thing if the council wants to kind of see what those changes are. If you find out that somehow you don't like them, you can always come back and work on the ordinance again. But in the meantime, you get to kind of see what what those are if Mr. Swanson is providing that report anyway. Again, sometimes at the end of the year, things get pretty busy, so maybe throw out an idea, maybe quarterly.
Mr. Weigl, comments?
I would agree with that. I think quarterly would be good. I'm not so worried about Mr. Swanson doing anything or manipulating this or anything like that, but I've dealt with some other attorneys at times where I probably wouldn't have that same faith in them.
And that would be the-
Say the sky is blue, and they're going to tell you it's green.
And that's the exact reason why you should adopt this ordinance.
So.
To put those controls, whether it's me or somebody else, define what their authority is.
So, I like the idea of the quarterly report, just to, or even, even if it went to the president of the city council, I've got enough trust in Dana that if he says, yeah, I'm good with it, then, you know, for the most part, I'm going to be good with it, as long as there's somebody that is aware of something.
Let me just pose this, and this can be hypothetical or it could be rhetorical. In the years that any of you have sat in your position, have you ever found a single change that ended up in the published code that you thought was an error? That was a correction that our office made? You don't have to answer that, but my suspicions are, no, and you didn't know about it because it happens that smoothlessly, that seamlessly. And that's what we're trying to continue. I'm just looking for limitations, authority that I can point to.
Ms. Weigl?
Would there be an amendment to the, I think there's a motion on the floor, correct?
There was a motion on the floor.
Could we amend that, just a quarterly report? Throwing that in there?
I made that motion. Quarterly seems quite often to me. I'm wondering if six months?
Once every six months, yeah, I mean.
That's what I would amend my motion to.
Is there a friendly second? Great. I still have reservations about the including but not limited to. Again, I think if we're going for black and white, that's gray.
Then I tell you to delete that phrase.
Okay, well, I would make, is there, would somebody like to make the motion for that amendment? Mr. Weigl, is there a second? Ms. Mock? On the motion to amend, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Very good discussion, Mr. Swanson. Thank you so much.
And I think I'm done.
Yes, we appreciate everything you do for us, sir. Item 2.7, request for, we are on 2.7, right? Request for noise variance and co-mingling from Brick and Barley for Hugo's summer concert series on May 11th, June 15th, July 13th, July 25th, August 24th, 2019. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy. I can't even talk today. And council members, this is our first permit, that's our staff report that's come forward for a noise variance, and again, the letter of intent for co-mingling. This particular venue, Brick and Barley, has done several of these in the past. We've brought several of these forward, and they have been a great steward using the co-mingling along with our security with the Grand Forks Police Department.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Weigl. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.8, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the caper. Good evening, Meredith.
Good evening. Every year, the city submits a report to HUD on the performance of its CDBG program. It's time to submit that report by April 1. We've got a draft posted on the city website. Part of our process is to solicit public comment on that performance, so the action that we're requesting of council is to set next Monday, the 18th, as that public hearing date.
Great. Any questions or comments?
I move approval.
A second? Moved by Veen, second by Weber. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.9, approved plans and specifications, Part A, project number 8042, District 738, University Avenue Construction and Medians Lighting from Cooley to 42nd Street. Mr. Walker, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. So I've been before you the last three committee of the whole meetings, I believe, regarding this project. The next step in developing this project is to approve the plans and specifications. It is intended that we would final up these plans and specifications and advertise for construction bids probably towards the end of the week, with the intent that we would open bids around April 1st and bring these bids back to the committee of the whole at the April 8th meeting. I've kind of explained the project to you before, just for your curiosity, I did bring the set of plans. This is a final review set, and we're currently going through this now, making final edits to it. I guess where we're at, the current engineer's estimate for the project is around $13.2 million with a city share of about $4.5 million. The remainder of the project costs to be specialist assessed to UND properties. With that, our recommendation is to approve the plans and specifications for this project.
Any questions for Mr. Walker?
I move approval.
Moved by Veen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Weigl. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And then 2.9B, project numbers 7903, 7904, and 7905, district numbers 552, 338, and 553, sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer for Opportunity Park First Resubdivision. Mr. Grazer?
Thank you, President Sandy, that was a good description of the project. We created the district last, last cycle, approving plans and specs is the next step in that process, and we are ready to request approval of those plans and specs for bid.
Any comments? That moved by Weigl, second by Ma, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 210, bid awards for project, Part A, project number 7963 and 7977, district number 221 and 733, storm sewer and paving streetlights for Kingsview Seventh Resubdivision. Mr. Grazer?
Thank you, President Sandy. Again, this is the last step in the special assessment process in which we award the bids. You described the work out there in the Kingsview area, paving and associated storm sewer that goes with it. We received, opened bids on March 4th, we received three bids, and the low bidder is Paris Contracting in the amount of, in the report, a little over a million dollars for the storms, for the storm sewer and paving. And they were a little bit over the engineer's estimate, but, or underestimate, I'm sorry, so we got good bids, we're recommending award.
Any comments or questions? Moved by Marshall? Second by Ma? Hearing any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210B, project number 7922, district number 556, storm sewer for intersection of 12th Avenue North and North 53rd Street. Mr. Grazer?
Thank you. This is actually the second go-around of this project. We rejected bids once, and we are going to recommend rejecting bids again. One minor change I'd like to bring to your attention here on the staff report, currently the staff report says reject bid and authorize staff to rebid the project. We want to take out the words about authorizing rebid. What our intention would be, would be to reject the bids at this council, and then the next go-around, we would actually provide a new engineer's report. It looks like some of the material costs and things that are going on in 2019 are higher than what we anticipated, so we, we need to adjust our engineer's estimate. So we would do that with the engineer's report and then, and then rebid from that. If council's in agreement with that, we would change the staff recommendation between the committee of the whole tonight and city council next week.
Is there a motion to simply reject the bids? Moved by Ma, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grazer. Lastly, item 211, replacement of transport tube at the wastewater treatment plant. Good evening, Ms. Parby.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Tonight, we're just asking to replace that transport tube. It's actually an enclosed auger system that carries the grit from the classifier to the dumpster. They've had to patch it, and we do have money in our budget to be able to purchase it this year. It's just over our authority to be able to sole source, and this is kind of a, something that you take out and you got to put right back in, otherwise it doesn't fit quite properly, so.
Need to move the grit to the dumpster. Moved by Ma, second by Marshall. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Dockler, second by Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.